Good evening. Before we begin, I'd like to make a few comments. First, I want to thank the members of the COPA Index Advisory Work Group for the excellent opportunities they've provided the people in the region, the state, and other stakeholders to make comments and inform this important and historic process. The process was set in rule and has worked well. We're particularly appreciative of the work and leadership of Chair Gary Mays, a wise and effective leader in this region with a deep knowledge of its population health needs. The information we've received from the five listening sessions thus far has already informed the questions we have had for the applicants. It would be helpful, I think, for me to introduce myself. My name is John Dreisner. I'm a physician, and I am the Commissioner of the Tennessee Department of Health. To my right is our hearing officer, Allison Thicpin, and to my far right is our Director of Policy, Eric Harkness. To my immediate left is General Counsel Jane Young, and to her left, my far left, is Assistant General Counsel Maleka Watson. It may also be helpful to note that this is a new and, in some ways, a precedent-setting and historic process, and we appreciate the cooperation of the applicants and the many other stakeholders in our mutual obligations to the integrity of the process under Tennessee law. A certificate of public advantage, while in law since 1993 and amended in 2015, has not previously been applied for. The Tennessee Department of Health worked with all speed to create a framework and rules to carry out the wishes of the people as reflected by the Tennessee General Assembly in evaluating the application to ascertain if the likely benefits resulting from the agreement outweigh any disadvantages attributable to a reduction in competition. It would be appropriate at this time to review, in part, a few major features of the, of this Certificate of Public Advantage statute. So I will be reading from the statute from the Tennessee law at this time. Is the policy of the state, in certain instances, to displace competition among hospitals with regulation to the extent set forth and to actively supervise that regulation to the fullest extent required by law in order to promote cooperation and coordination among hospitals in the provision of health services and to provide state action immunity from federal and state antitrust law to the fullest extent possible to those hospitals issued a certificate of public advantage under this section? A hospital may negotiate and enter into a cooperative agreement with other hospitals if the likely benefits resulting from the agreement outweigh any disadvantages attributable to a reduction in competition that may result from the agreement. Parties to a cooperative agreement may apply to the department for a certificate of public advantage governing that cooperative agreement. The department shall review the application in accordance with the standards set forth in these subsections and shall hold a public hearing in accordance with the rules adopted by the department. And finally, again, reading in part from the law. After consultation with an agreement from the Attorney General and reporter, the department shall issue a certificate of public advantage for a cooperative agreement if it determines that the applicants have demonstrated by clear and convincing evidence that the likely benefits resulting from the agreement outweigh any disadvantages attributable to a reduction in competition that may result from the agreement. So tonight, we have an opportunity to hear your perspectives, the perspectives of the public and other stakeholders regarding the advantages and disadvantages of the agreement. I would, I would like to also recognize tonight some of the members of, of our General Assembly. We have with us, I see, Senator Rusty Crowe and Senator John, Representative John Lundberg. Just understand, sir, back from your service to the Naval Reserve, thank you for your service. I believe we have Representative Mike, Representative Matthew Hill with us as well, thank you for your service, sir. And I thought we had Representative Mike Harrison as well. Not, may not be here as well. And Mayor Eldridge is in the audience. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to thank you, the members of the public, to include members of the media, for your presence here tonight. It's really important that we get your perspectives and your input, and, and we do believe by your presence here tonight that that is a terrific reflection of your commitment to the health and prosperity of this region and the state of Tennessee. And with that, I will turn this over to our hearing officer, Allison Thicpin. She will review some of the other particulars of this evening, and then we will ask if our, if our elected officials would like to, to begin the comment period.
Great. Thank you so much. You'll notice, if you've been to some of our other listening sessions, that the group in front of you is, is a little different, and that's because the purpose of tonight's hearing is, is different than the listening sessions. We are here tonight, like Dr. Dreisner said, to hear from the public on whether or not a COPA should, should be issued. I'd like to recognize Senator Crowe.
I, obviously, I think, as you know, was sponsor of the, the COPA legislation in the Senate. Representative Harrison sponsored it in the, in the House. I think Matthew Hill and Representative Lundberg co-sponsored in the, the House as well. And I, as Chair of the Senate Health Committee, I'm, I'm going to kind of go through the scenario, and so I'm kind of talking to both groups here for any of those that may not know exactly what's going on, and, and obviously, I'm speaking to the choir up front here. But, but as Chair of the Senate Health Committee, I've had the opportunity, as you know, to work with hospitals statewide and, and deal with systems across the nation. And I can tell you that hospitals are having a very, very difficult time, as you know, again, I'm speaking to the choir, trying to make ends meet. And part of the problems are the changing climate in healthcare, the, obviously, the regulations that come down from the federal government that change continuously, CMS and other regulations, the reimbursements that hospitals get due to wage indexing, and, and obviously, some of the crowd may not know that that is dependent on, on the wages that are paid in different areas, you know, have urban and rural type, type areas, and it's dependent on the, the economies and the, the cost of living and those sorts of things in various areas. Our area happens to, to, to not have the, the, the level of reimbursement that we would like, our hospitals in this area, that some might get, and so that's very, makes it very difficult as well. The Affordable Care Act insurance problems, and, and it goes on and on, trying to meet the bottom line is just so much more difficult for hospitals these days. All of this makes, makes it difficult, difficult to maintain that quality of care that you want to maintain, to, to provide for the most modern technologies. Diagnostic technology is so expensive these days. Recruiting the best physicians and specialists is very difficult, and our, our systems, both of our systems, try to, to do that as best they can, but it's not easy. And again, just trying to meet the bottom line. So hospitals are not engaging in acquisitions and mergers these days to try to grow and, and increase their bottom line. They're essentially doing it to survive. And I think this is the tip of the iceberg. We're going to see more and more of this nationwide, and I think all eyes in this nation are going to be on this merger, as it's one of those first major mergers that's taking place, and, and I think as a result of trying to, to, to really make ends meet and to survive and to provide that kind of health care that we want to provide for our region. So the proposed merger will make us, and I think this is a very positive thing, one of the largest academic healthcare systems in this nation, which is a great thing for the research potential we're going to see, we're going to see an elevated graduate medical education potential, a more focused approach for quality healthcare. And I think what I really am looking forward to is a reduction of overlap of function between the two hospitals that's going to allow for hundreds of millions of dollars that would normally go back into a not-for-profit systems, pockets to, to increase their, their ability to provide healthcare. That's going to happen, but at the same time, the dollars that are, that are gained from this reduce, reduction of overlap of function are going to go directly back into the community, hundreds of millions of dollars that our, our different communities can decide how to use in concert with Wellmott and Mountain States once they merge. So to protect our communities and to make sure that the advantages of merging much outweigh the disadvantages, we passed through the House and Senate, as you said, the bill requiring that, what is called the COPA process, a certificate of public advantage. This requires both systems together to formally apply for permission to merge, essentially convincing the Department of Health and the Attorney General's Office that the merger would be to the advantage of the region such that the healthcare provided is, is good or better, and hopefully, I think in this case, it can be better from, from various perspectives than it was in the past, or that it would be in the future had they not merged especially. Now, this COPA will require the Department of Health and the Attorney General to continuously monitor, which is a good thing, the newly formed system. It's kind of like a Community Protection Act, I think. It controls pricing, cost, quality, things like that. So I feel very comfortable that this is the right solution and that this whole process has been developed in partnership with the state. And as you said, that is a good thing, looking at the precedent that's been set in Georgia and North Carolina with regard to making sure that, that state action immunity is in place, which essentially says that, that when you work in partnership with the state, then the, the systems that are involved have that same immunity as the state has. So it will allow us to control our own destiny, have some very large hospital systems from outside not come in, potentially for profit systems that might have come in that don't understand our area and, and provide a situation where we couldn't really control our, our systems as, as we know we should for this region. And it will provide for, as I said, tremendous opportunities for research, technology, physician recruitment, quality care, reduction of overlap of function, with those dollars going back to the community. So Commissioner, I'm, I'm very positive on this approach. I think, I appreciate the work you guys have done. It's been a, a, a long process, but I think, one that I think we'll all be proud of, and we appreciate the work that you and the department have done and are doing to make sure that the advantages do outweigh the disadvantages. And with that, I'll turn it over to Representative Lundberg.
Thank you, Senator. Thanks for your presence here tonight.
I think I should just say ditto. I don't think you left a lot on the table there, so, Commissioner, good to see you. Good to see all of you. I'll tell you frankly, I'm a little disappointed in Wellmott and Mountain States Health Lines. And that's because they didn't do this 25 years ago. When they took a hospital in Kingsport and a hospital in Bristol and put them together, they created what was the first system. And it's good, and it was strong. If they had just added some more, that would have been really strong. Healthcare is a very complex issue, so I'm not going to try to come up here, especially to you as a physician, and, and talk about healthcare in, in that way. But I will say, from a business and a community perspective, I'm completely biased because I, frankly, my concern is in my district and what happens. And it's really northeast Tennessee and what happens here. I like competition, but in competition, let me tell you about the competition here. In this case, and what's happening with the competition, competition is hurting us. And I'll give you one example that I believe to take note of. In Tennessee, we have, I think, strong healthcare across the state, but look in Memphis, they have one Level One Trauma Center. Chattanooga has one. Nashville has one. We have two. We have two within 15 minutes of each other. We do that because we've created this overabundance, and those extra dollars that are going in are dollars that we could be using far more effectively with our education and ETSU and the collaboration we've got in, in medicine that way. We are trying to outspend, and frankly, that competition is actually hurting this region. That's why this one system is frankly so important to this area. It's important to the individuals. I thank you for your time. I thank you for being here, and I hope you will say yes at the end. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative Lundberg. Representative Hill?
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and thank you for being here, and thank you for your staff being here as well. My name is Matthew Hill. I represent the Seventh House District, which is half of Johnson City, the southern half of Washington County, and the entire town of Jonesboro. I'm here representing my constituents tonight, and many, many of those constituents work for Mountain States Health Alliance and for East Tennessee State University. In fact, when you look at my district, Mountain States is the largest employer, ETSU is the second-largest employer. And when I look at this, I'll be very honest, when I first looked at this, I had some concerns. As I got more information and, and more education on what was going to hopefully happen if you all see fit to approve this, I became much more comfortable. The COPA legislation that I did co-sponsor and support, I think, has very needed level of oversight. It has a very, as we've seen with all the public hearings, a very needed level of transparency. Without that level of oversight and transparency, I don't think I could be for it, and I think other legislators and other community leaders would be given serious pause as well. I think the exit, or it's called the, what's it called? Not exit plan, separation plan is vital, is vitally important, so that everyone, all stakeholders, as well as business leaders and, and people that work for these systems and are employed and feed their families from these jobs, are able to see what is there. And just having that requirement alone, I think, is another level of accountability that is so important here. Representative Lundberg stole my thunder. I was going to talk about the Level One Trauma Center too, because he's absolutely correct. They're 15, 20 minutes apart, and they both do excellent jobs, but what that does is suck resources away from other things, diagnostic testing, outpatient services, specialty, things that can be done. I've talked with Dr. Nolan at ETSU. The research potential for ETSU to, to work alongside this new system is, the potential is just phenomenal. To be able to be a true academic center of research, of medical research, is just unparalleled. The tens, if not really over time, hundreds of millions of dollars that can be poured into research here in northeast Tennessee is very exciting. The types of jobs that it will sustain here, as well as the types of jobs that it will bring to this area, high-paying, scientific, scientifically-based, medically-based-type jobs are just wonderful. So I think when you look at what I said, the level of transparency of the process, the level of accountability from the Department of Health and others, and with the separation plan that has to be filed, I think those are the types of measures and circuit breakers that are in place to make sure that the public, as much as can be, is, is assured of what we have. And I understand, because I hear from my constituents all the time, and I hear their concerns. I also host a talk show on the radio, so I get to hear the phone calls as well from folks all over the region. And these listening sessions that you've had leading up to tonight have been very, very important, because there have been a lot of misconceptions, and I used to have some of those, about what was going to occur if this is ultimately approved. So thank you for having the listening sessions. Thank you for being here in the tri-cities tonight. I appreciate it very much. And I appreciate the work of what we're attempting to do with this COPA, and that is take healthcare in northeast Tennessee to the next level. It is so easy where I live, in Johnson City and Washington County, to get spoiled, because we have specialists, we have subspecialists, we have a top-notch children's hospital, but think what can happen when everyone is working together as one, and then the research that'll be able to take place as well. And so with all of that said, that is why, at the end of the day, I see this as a positive, not only for my district and the folks that work at ETSU and Mountain States, but really for the families that'll be receiving the healthcare ultimately. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Representative Hill.
Great. I will give you the first three folks that will, will be up, and then you can start making your way to the front as, as you can. So we'll start with, with Candy Childress, after her, Ken Maynes, and then Craig Turner.
Good evening. My name is Candy Childress, and I'm the Executive Director of Healthy Kingsport. Healthy Kingsport is dedicated to creating a community that actively embraces healthy living by promoting wellness, enhancing infrastructure, and influencing policy. We accomplish our work by virtue of the Collective Impact Model, a best practice for solving complex, pressing social issues. This model is designed around a backbone organization, Healthy Kingsport, which serves as the convener of many organizations, working toward a common agenda with shared measurements, mutually reinforcing activities, and continuous communication. Wellmott Health System, Mountain States Health Alliance, and ETSU's College of Public Health are all critical members of our collaborative. As a collaborative, we are working diligently at the grassroots level to reverse decades of adverse health trends plaguing our region, specifically obesity and type 2 diabetes. We have created momentum that is building daily. A merged health system would enable our region to increase the velocity of change necessary to address obesity and diabetes rates that are higher in our region than the state and national averages. In fact, the proposed merger would ensure those directly responsible for influencing population health would create a locally governed health system that would enable decisions about this region's healthcare to continue to be decided by people who live, work, and worship in our region. Again, we need the momentum and velocity of change that a merged system would bring to our region.
The merged system has committed to invest at least $75 million in population health to meet the unique needs of our region through a 10-year plan to be developed in conjunction with the community, not an outside entity coming in. Without the merged system, this investment would not be possible. Are we, as a region, willing to risk the negative population health outcomes that would surely result with no action or denial of the COPA? I sincerely hope not. The path forward is clear. We, as conservative citizens, must have the courage to embrace it. I ask that you support the state. I ask that you grant a certificate of public advantage to Wellmott Health System and Mountain States Health Alliance.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here, Commissioner and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you on such an important issue facing our region.
I'm Ken Maynes, a longtime businessperson, a longtime citizen of the region, and a longtime volunteer, currently serving as Commissioner of the Tri-Cities Regional Airport. None of us want to lose our local hospitals. None of us want to lose our specialists and our centers of excellence. None of us want to withstand the economic loss that would come out of moving centers of care out of tri-cities to distant markets, leaving us as a healthcare feeder system for a larger parent system. Think of the economic benefit to our region that arises out of just one highly-trained doctor in the specialty field. We have dozens of those doctors here today, and what would happen if they left? What happens when we're forced to make a several-hour trip to other markets a few hours away to see these specialists?
Suddenly, we become an economic driver for those markets. I wholeheartedly believe that a well-structured partnership between our two excellent local healthcare systems will create a healthy, viable, and sustainable local healthcare system, one that will retain local ownership and governance, and will allow the combined entity to continue to make a positive impact on our region's health and economic well-being. I'm here tonight to ask for your help, to ask you to recommend approval of this merger of equals, to avoid the prospect of losing our community-owned healthcare assets to an outside entity. This region rightly feels a strong ownership of these two systems, because it was we and those who came before us who raised the resources and brought these community hospitals to fruition. Many years ago, before any of us were born, our parents and their friends and neighbors raised money, a dollar at a time, in order to give the people of this area access to superior healthcare. Why? Because in order to create economic opportunity in the southern Appalachian region, they believed local healthcare was a critical component to enhance the quality of life. If things were different, and if healthcare marketplace could continue to support two systems, none of us would be here tonight. Both systems believe their future as a standalone entity is questionable. One of our systems began a systematic process to discharge their assets to an out-of-market entity, because they saw no path to continuation as a locally-based system. The other system assured the market they would be doing the same thing if that occurred. So they now see the path, and each board have enthusiastically endorsed it. They didn't come to the table together. They came to the table because of insistence by the local community that they look at merging together. So as you strive to make a good decision on this issue, I realize a lot of people are concerned about the antitrust and possible impact on healthcare pricing. Throughout history, there's been a lot of competition in the region, but none of it has existed, not very much of it, has existed on the pricing front. We know this region can work together. We have a sterling example just a few hundred yards away at the Tri-Cities Airport Commission. We know we can work together to provide a great healthcare system for our market. In conclusion, I repeat my earnest belief that the right outcome for our region is a combination of these two excellent healthcare systems, and I ask you to please approve the COPA.
Thank you.
We'll have Craig Turner, and then followed by Dan Mahoney and Louis Gump.
Good evening. Mister Chairman and members of the COPA Index Advisory Group, my name is Craig Turner, and I'm the CEO of Appalachian Orthopedics. We're a multi-specialty orthopedic physician group of 16 physicians. We employ 120 people in, in three offices in the tri-city area, and we commend you on your completion of the index in the Department of Health on the transparent nature of this process. Our group does not oppose the merger, but we would like to discuss one important aspect of the index, that the potential merger, that if not addressed, may deter support from our group and wider community of independent physicians. Economic category number three on page 10 addresses the need for the state to reevaluate the certificate of need process for northeast Tennessee. The desired trend, as stated, is to increase patient choice. I contend that a fundamental change in the CON process would, in addition, increase quality, access, and lower costs. I have included in my statements a recent article from the U.S. News and World Report in an amicus brief referenced in the article. Tennessee remains one of 36 states to have the CON process, which was initially designed to control cost and ensure adequate supply. Unfortunately, the literature does not support either belief. Furthermore, the literature does support that states with CON regulation have a lower number of hospital beds in MRI imaging per capita at a higher cost than those that have no such process. Since this state-approved COPA is being considered, I believe that the state should also consider a CON-free zone for northeast Tennessee to limit the ability of the merged entity to oppose the CON applications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Mahoney?
And I do, excuse me, I do have some things to be placed.
Great. You can drop them in the box, and we'll be happy to take a look at them.
Thank you for hearing us, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'm a local business owner, former medical center board member, and now a current Misha Foundation member. My concern is not now, but what's going to happen in the future. I believe that if these two systems do not merge, that outside companies will come in, and they will, it'll be a completely new ballgame then. But you know, I've got faith in this COPA. The more I read about the COPA and how it was set up and what it's for, I've got faith in what it's going to do. I've got faith in it keeping competition a viable mix of the, of the, the group, and I've also got faith that the costs of healthcare will be competitive and will be, will stay in line with the national and the local entities that are there. I think that the savings that will be, will come from this merger will also be reinvested into this community, and I think that it'll be good for the community, and it'll also will be able to create more jobs and not less jobs. People in our market are worried about jobs. How many jobs are going to be lost? Well, I know there will be some merging of the two systems. That's, that's a given, but what about if we don't have the merger of the two? An outside conglomerate coming in here? I think it will be a lot more jobs we're losing. These two systems work very good together. We've been competitive for years and years, and it's been good for up east Tennessee and southwest Virginia. Been very good. But I believe that, I think that things are going to get better in, in this area. I think that an out-of-market system will come in and absorb more jobs, and they'll use their market use their marketing power to negotiate higher payments to insurers. What little I know about a COPA is that, you know, the process is going to be good for us. We're unique. We serve two states. We're sitting with a major university, East Tennessee State University, who is absolutely going to provide research and development opportunities and more things like this. We have a Veterans Administration that's second to none in the country. It's been, it's worked so well so far. We would like to have the opportunity to keep it that way. I respectfully ask you to provide us with this COPA. Thank you.
Commissioner and staff, certainly appreciate your being here and taking the time to consider the COPA. I'm a Johnson City native and lived here most of my life, except for times that I've been away in school or a couple of years in the Navy on the West Coast. And I proudly tell people that I live here by choice, not necessity. Been in seven continents, and I've been active here in the healthcare environment in the 1970s and 80s in the wholesale drug business, now then the politically correct term is pharmaceutical distribution. And I also stayed involved in the healthcare activities in the 90s and early 2000s. Had the privilege of being on the Johnson City Medical Center Board and a couple of years as Chair. And in that capacity, I've talked with people in the area, and it became obvious that the tertiary care competition is not our sister city, but is national and regional with places such as MD Anderson, Sloan-Kettering, Vanderbilt, and Duke. And for us to be viable and competitive, we need to be able to operate in that environment. I think the consolidation will help. The duplication of these tertiary services, which I've seen some of and heard about more, is unnecessary. And we can provide the tertiary services in the region. We can do it at reduced cost. The savings will go to add additional jobs, facilities, output, so we can expand access to healthcare. I think the key to this is a COPA process, which provides cost control and quality outcome measurements, and most of all, if approved, and I hope it will be, it will enable us to have local governance and input, which is critically important to people of the region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Tickle, and he will be followed by Dennis Phillips, Dan Eldridge, and Scott Nieswanger.
Thank you very much. My name is John Tickle. I'm chairman of the company and manufacturing business in Bristol and throughout the United States and the world. And I spend several million dollars a year locally on healthcare. I'm a former chairman of the Bristol Regional Medical Center and was chairman when we built a new hospital there back in the early 90s. I was supposed to have a two-year term. I end up having a five-year term. We had to change the bylaws for me to do that, so I was too done not to continue on to serve as chairman. This all came about about a year ago when the Wellmont was going down the path to sell their hospital or give it away. You don't really sell hospitals; you give them away. And right away, we formed a group of several of us that started asking questions and what have you. We had an executive officer there that had a conflict of interest, and she sold the board down the road what they're going to do. She was working now for people involved in that merger. And so, we were going down a path that I was, did not think was in best interest of the healthcare of this region. And they did convince me that a hospital our size could not stay that size and be viable. We need to call them the scales. And so, out of that outcome, we said, "Let's merge the two hospitals together, the two systems together." I think it's the right thing to do. I hope you agree. I think we can continue to have the excellent and better healthcare that we offer at a reasonable, affordable price. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you for listening to me. I'm an Eagle Scout. We did three minutes. I urge everybody else to do three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Phillips?
Thank you all for being here. My name is Dennis Phillips, and I had the privilege of serving as Mayor of Kingsport, Tennessee from 2005 to 2015. A total of 10 years, seven wonderful years. As part of my job as mayor, I served on the board of Holston Valley Hospital, and let me tell you, this is real, the hospital struggles. You know, in the past, I know the hospitals have said, "We can't operate under this; we can't operate under that." And maybe it was the old crying wolf story, but I can tell you, this is real. The merger of these two hospitals is truly a merger. Anything else coming in is a takeover. If a hospital from out of state comes here, I can assure you, they're going to come here to buy one of these hospitals or take over one of these hospitals, and they're not going to do it to serve the community; they're going to do it to make a profit. And I know that people are worried about your costs going up. Well, when both hospitals have to sell to an out-of-state conglomerate, rest assured, they're going to make a profit, and your rates are going to go up more than ever go up under a COPA that you all have the opportunity to approve and force the hospitals to operate under. This is the only way we can have a true merger and serve the citizens of the northeast Tennessee the way they should be served. So far, we've had excellent and outstanding medical facilities. That will not continue in the future. Financially, I've seen what's happened to the hospitals, and it's not been good. And I would urge you to allow our communities to operate our hospitals, certainly because it's in the best interest of our communities, it's in the best interest of the state of Tennessee and all concerned, that we are allowed the opportunity to serve the medical needs of our community. A COPA or any other thing that we do is not going to be perfect, but it is going to be as close to perfect as we can do because we have the opportunity to do it right on the front end. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Eldridge?
Afternoon, Commissioner, staff. I'm Dan Eldridge, Washington County Mayor. In December 2013, Washington County, as a part of a new debt issuance for capital projects, went through a rigorous bond rating review by Moody's Investor Services. During that review, Moody's analysts identified Washington County's exposure to the healthcare sector and the uncertainties associated with it as a factor which could potentially negatively impact our local economy. Next Wednesday, a contingent from Washington County will be in New York, meeting with analysts from both Moody's and S&amp;P as they review the proposed refinancing of the county's $130 million issuance from 2007 and the proposed $100 million-plus issuance later this year to fund a capital investment plan. In the list of analyst questions we have to respond to prior to next week's meeting is a request on the update of the overall healthcare sector. Clearly, Washington County and all of northeast Tennessee, for that matter, has benefited greatly from the enormous investment in facilities and patient services made by Mountain States and Wellmont over the last several years. We enjoy access to healthcare and quality of care that most regions our size will never have. We have thousands of people employed in healthcare, making well-above median incomes and receiving great benefits. We benefit from the generosity of these two organizations through their support of many programs and activities that promote and enhance the quality of life in our communities. But obviously, regulatory changes have added an element of uncertainty to the healthcare sector of our economy that has the potential to even impact Washington County's borrowing for new schools. As you would expect, the bond rating analysts are focused on identifying risks. In 2013, our healthcare sector was viewed as a potential risk to the local economy. In 2014, the Washington County Commission itself acknowledged the risks in the healthcare sector, unanimously passing a resolution expressing their support for maintaining local control. I'd like to share just a small portion of the resolution. Whereas, regional access to quality healthcare systems that are responsible to our local population health challenges and focused on clinical excellence is integral to the overall desirability of this region, our ability to attract employers and new investment, and to improving the quality of life for our citizens. And whereas, healthcare is the largest provider of jobs in Washington County, Tennessee, providing a significant direct impact on the economy of this region. Now therefore, be it resolved, that we strongly encourage the boards of directors of our local healthcare systems to carefully consider the impact of their decisions on the quality and availability of the comprehensive healthcare services currently accessible in this region and the economic impact likely to result from the loss of local control. And so, they did. I'm here this afternoon as a local elected official, very thankful to the boards of Wellmont and Mountain States for making a commitment to this region that has resulted in a planned merger that I believe is a best-case scenario. I say this because a combined system of Mountain States and Wellmont, managed by the team of professionals we know, governed by a local board representing and invested in communities across this region, and operating under the terms of a certificate of public advantage, is the best opportunity to alleviate many of the risks that have impacted the healthcare sector of our local economy, that may have impacted the healthcare sector of our local economy and the quality and availability of healthcare across the region. In New York next week, I'll be sharing with the rating analysts my expectations for this merger to positively impact not just Washington County, but the region, anticipating that the potential for risk they expressed three years ago will be greatly diminished by our commitment to solve the healthcare issues of this region locally. As you may have already concluded, I strongly support this COPA application, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nieswanger, and he will be followed by Roy Harmon, Bill Green, and Gail Mitchell.
Thank you all for being here this afternoon. I'm Scott Nieswanger. I'm a business owner and retired CEO of a public company. Our two companies employ over 4,000 people. Over 500 of those are in the first congressional district of Tennessee in southwest Virginia. I'm the benefactor of the Nieswanger Children's Hospital and a member of the Joint Merger Board Task Force. I'm a longtime resident of this region in building those businesses here. This is the first time I could say as an employer that there may be a chance I'll know what my healthcare premiums will increase. If, in fact, the COPA takes place, we know that it will be driven by the average cost of living within our region, which today would be 2% to 3%, as opposed to the 7% to 12% to 13%, 14% that we've seen every single year for the last 10 years. Both healthcare systems have made it clear that if this merger can't happen, that they will be forced to seek partnerships outside our region. History shows that across the country, in those type of mergers, by outside hospitals coming in, the average cost of healthcare increases that first year by 14%. The money that would be saved by rationalizing healthcare within our region go to two things: to pay, to accelerate our payment, our debt structure as a single entity, and to also fund the East Tennessee State University Research Foundation, which is a shell that exists today, but could use this funding. That would minimize the number of jobs that would be lost in terms of being able to create them and recreate those jobs in another area at the university, creating medical devices and additional healthcare issues here. Again, I hope that you will approve this COPA. I think you're hearing a repetitive theme here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Harmon?
Thank you for being here. Thank you for coming to East Tennessee. My name is Roy Harmon. I am the chairman and CEO of Bank of Tennessee, locally-owned community bank. We have about $1 billion in assets. We have 16 branches in East Tennessee, 289 employees, 243 carried under our insurance plans, representing 373 covered lives. So, my perspective is more along those lines. We have an active board of directors of 20 members from the region. They're from Kingsport, Bristol, Johnson City, Elizabethan, and Avery, North Carolina. My mother was a nurse at Holston Valley. I was born in Holston Valley, back when there was only one hospital. The doctor that delivered me delivered 22,000 babies out of that hospital, everybody in my elementary, middle, and high school from that period of time. So, as you can see, we're not about competition, but more about collaboration and cooperation. I think you get a good sense of that tonight. But our goals as an employer is the health and well-being of our employees. We want to have a strong health education, strong preventative care. We have a lot of personal responsibility, and we also want to have great student care whenever that is needed. But our executive management of the bank, our board, we've discussed this extensively. And as an employer, we unanimously support it. We've evaluated the COPA and its impact on our objectives for the health and well-being of our employees and their families. We've evaluated the competitive aspects of multiple systems, and we've come to the conclusion that the continued arms race of the past has produced a costly system with suboptimal utilization. We think that the upside benefits of cooperation will bring us better outcomes, faster EMR adoption, and the opportunity for the adoption of leading-edge technology that remaining separate wouldn't bring. So, as a larger employer, we have access to the leadership and boards of the hospitals, their healthcare, the boards of the healthcare providers. We know our representatives. We know our congressmen. We know our senators, and we are actively engaged in the political process. So, you can believe me when I say that if this COPA doesn't work, you will hear from us. I think that's pretty evident tonight. In summary, we support this merger and the enabling COPA. We think it has the opportunities to significantly enhance our health systems. It will provide research and teaching resources that presently are unavailable, and it will impact positively the outcomes of a very difficult public health dynamic that we find ourselves here in, here in East Tennessee. We have a very, a very difficult population here. So, again, I respectfully ask for approval of this COPA and moving along this process posthaste. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Green?
Dr. Dresner and staff, I'm delighted you're here. Steve Smith said to tell you hello. He's in Chattanooga and couldn't join us, but he's been part of our group. I'm Bill Green. I'm chairman of the company that owns Bank of Tennessee, which Roy just spoke of. I'm a past chairman of four public companies, and I started the first statewide bank in the state of Tennessee. I'm pretty familiar with competition. I've either bought, sold, or started 40 banks. We're presently in Nashville, so you'll see our sign all over Nashville. What I'm going to take track on tonight is totally different than everything we've talked about here because I cannot emphasize how proud I am of all of our people saying what they've said because they've said it better than I can say it. So, I'm going in another direction. Let's look 51 minutes south of here. You have 21 states that approve the COPA arrangement in this country. You've had four states that have passed them. Only one state has been challenged by the FTC, and that was Maine. They withdrew the application, put it back in, and the FTC dropped their case. If you're familiar with North Carolina, which is somewhat competitive with us, my boy that mows my yard just had his knee replaced over there, and my vice president of one of my banks had his other knee replaced. But let's look at Misha for a second. Stop and think about the combination 21 years ago with the COPA in North Carolina with St. Joseph's Hospital and Mission. Today, they have 92% of all healthcare covered in their territory, the footprint they operate in. And what's interesting, that was a competitive two hospitals in Asheville. What's also interesting is 50% of their revenues come from outside their region. Tells me it's a destination hospital. If you also remember, or if you've seen the statistics on it, in the state of North Carolina, their admissions cost runs $3,000 less than their peer group. They, over the last... They, over the last 15 years, over the last 10 years, have been the top 15 hospitals in America in the last five years, and the top three in peer groups their size. The reason I point this out to you is, Dr. Dreisner, I want to be here when North Carolina and Tennessee do the same thing they did to Misha. If you remember last year, the Attorney General and the Commissioner of Health in North Carolina withdrew the COPA and said, "Have at it." Last year, their revenues were $62 million less than the COPA agreement. I want to thank you for coming up here. I would very much like for you to study what happened in North Carolina. We want the same artillery that they have, so that we can be who we have become. This is our area, we're just as smart as they are, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Mitchell? After Ms. Mitchell, we'll have Dwight Owens, Robert Means, Dr. Robert Means, and Mark Seidman.
Hello. Hello, John.
Hello, Gail.
I'm an employee of Bristol Regional Medical Center. I'm a member of this community. I'm the OR manager, nurse manager of Bristol Regional Medical Center. I recently decided to, I needed to know more about this merger, not just because Greg Neal told all the managers, "You need to read the application," because to speak intelligently about it, I felt like I needed to know what I was speaking about. One of the things I noticed, one of the points that I thought was of interest, is that Mountain States and Wellmont are going under, from what, everything I've read. Sooner or later, we have to come up with a solution to this problem, on how we're going to survive in the current health market. We can either merge, each one of us can merge with an outside healthcare system, or a for-profit health system, or we can join forces and become a large healthcare system that is governed and controlled by the members of this community. The second point of interest is, whether we like it or not, larger seems to be better. It's sort of the Ma and Paul versus the Walmart concept. There's a lot of benefits that goes along with being larger, such as purchasing power, consolidation of services, and sharing our resources. If we're going to survive, we're going to have to keep up. The third point of interest, if you look at the people who came up with this idea, and tonight I understand Mr. Tickle was involved in that, these are people that live in this community, they work in this community, they were born here, they go to school, they sit in the same pew that you sit in in church. They are us. They're the ones who came up with the COPA agreement. They're the ones that want $75 million to be spent on health improvement, or $140 million to expand mental health services, or drug addiction. Who doesn't know the problem that we have in this area with drug addiction? My daughter is autistic. She was diagnosed by Dr. Dreisner's wife. But I have to go to North Carolina to get the appropriate mental health treatment for her. $85 million or more to develop and grow academic and research opportunities. We have a shortage of nurses in this community. We need this increase in spending in academics and research. I know change comes with a certain amount of fear and suspicion, but I ask that you vote in support of this COPA agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwight Owens?
Good evening. I am, my name is Dwight Owens. I'm the director of pharmacy services at Bristol Regional Medical Center, as well as the Process Improvement Council for the Wellmont Health System. I've been employed at Bristol Regional for 16 years, and the Wellmont Health System for 20 years at this point, and I'd really like to share my enthusiasm for the proposed merger. We have an opportunity, really, to make a tremendous difference in the caliber of care and management of all our resources. One of the many beneficial ways our organization will positively impact healthcare in their region is through our efficient use of resources. I can appreciate this, because in our pharmacy, we have about a $21 million drug budget, and through the health system, it's about a $70 million budget. And I'm pleased to say that Wellmont, we have focused on eliminating waste throughout the organization through our process improvement. This ability to merge will allow both Wellmont and Mountain States to further concentrate on using their financial resources more efficiently. Also, by coming together, Wellmont and Mountain States will have the increased ability to reduce our purchasing costs, or rather, leverage our buying power. These efficiencies will enable us to channel those savings into new and expanded initiatives that will enhance the depth and quality of care that we offer. And I'm excited by the fundamental way that we will change our region for the better, by being able to invest those savings and leverages into mental health, drug addiction, and healthy starts for children. Finally, if we're able to merge, I believe it's going to be attractive for healthcare professionals as well. We spend a lot of time trying to attract specialties with physicians, but I believe it's going to allow us to recruit other specialties, such as pharmacists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, nurses, and the like. I also look forward to post-merging, being able to sit down with our colleagues at Mountain States, as well as the other professionals in the two organizations, being able to share best practices with each other in a detailed way, with all of us being focused on the lives of the patients within our region, being able to strengthen our protocols and develop new methods for treating patients through the collective wisdom of our organizations. So thank you for the opportunity to express my thoughts, and I would appreciate your support for the COPA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Means?
Thank you. I'm Dr. Bob Means. I'm the dean of the Quillen College of Medicine at East Tennessee State University, and I've been asked to speak tonight on behalf of ETSU. My comments will largely reflect a perspective from the ETSU Academic Health Sciences Center, the Colleges of Nursing, Public Health, Clinical and Rehabilitative Sciences, the GATT and College of Pharmacy, and the Quillen College of Medicine. From the perspective of the Academic Health Sciences Center, the ability to successfully meet our goals in teaching, scholarship, and service is completely dependent on strong partnership with hospitals that are excellent clinically, have sufficient patient activity available for learning, are stable financially, and most of all, are committed and responsive to the communities they serve and to the academic partnership. We have had such relationships with our longstanding private clinical partners, the Wellmont and Mountain State systems. We believe the proposed merger will allow these critical partnerships to continue. Why is this so important? The success of the Colleges of the Academic Health Sciences Center derives from the mutual commitment between the colleges and the communities in which we are located and which we serve. Our partnerships with Mountain States and Wellmont reflect this commitment. My examples are coming from medicine, because that's what I know best, but the deans of the other health sciences colleges could tell you very similar things. The missions of the Quillen College of Medicine are to train tomorrow's physicians, particularly those who will practice primary care in rural areas, to improve medical care in our region, and to advance medical knowledge. In partnership with the other health sciences colleges, we meet these missions every day. Quillen is nationally recognized by U.S. News and World Report for Sustained Excellence in Rural Medicine Training, and by the Association of American Medical Colleges for the high proportion of our graduates practicing primary care. We help to improve the care of the region by offering residency training in seven specialties and five subspecialties through faculty practices, in both primary care and specialty care throughout the tri-cities, and by engagement with the medical community, and by attracting physicians to the region, whether they come from training and choose to stay here, or whether they come as faculty. We contribute to the advancement of medical knowledge by bringing the problems of the region to the laboratory and solutions then back to the clinics. Successful accomplishment of all these missions depends on our partnerships with our regional health systems, which have been developed over the last 60 years. We, as just one example, our, the required educational experience for our third-year students alone require nearly 600 rotations each year in the Wellmont and Mountain State systems. Through robust partnerships between the Colleges of the ETSU Academic Health Sciences Center and a health system that is locally controlled, we believe the health and well-being of the region can be improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Seidman, and he will be followed by Nancy Barker, Chad Couch, and Rob Pack.
Good evening. I'm Mark Seidman, Deputy Assistant Director for the Mergers 4 Division at the Federal Trade Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before the Tennessee Department of Health today and discuss some preliminary thoughts about the proposed merger between Mountain State's Health Alliance and Wellmont Health System. The Federal Trade Commission has authorized me to appear. However, my remarks are my own, and are based on the views of FTC staff. They do not necessarily represent the views of the Federal Trade Commission or any individual commissioner. The FTC's mission is to promote competition and protect consumers. Competition provides consumers with the benefits of lower prices, higher-quality goods and services, and innovation. As part of its mission, the FTC regularly evaluates hospital mergers, assessing whether the potential benefits of a proposed merger outweigh the potential harm from the loss of competition. Our analysis is similar to the review that the Department of Health is required to perform as part of the COPA process. If we determine that the harm to consumers from a merger outweighs the merger's benefits, the FTC may challenge the merger. But the FTC challenges very few hospital mergers, only about 1% of announced hospital mergers over the last decade, and only challenges them when a thorough economic analysis and real-world evidence demonstrate that the merger would substantially lessen competition. In this case, the FTC staff has been analyzing the proposed merger of Mountain States and Wellmont for over a year. While our analysis is ongoing, and we look forward to receiving additional information regarding the party's COPA application, there appear to be few local alternatives to Mountain States and Wellmont. This means that most of the competition that each of these two systems currently face comes from each other. A merger between them would eliminate this competition and would lead to a single dominant health system in the area. Many studies have shown that when hospital mergers have substantially reduced competition, prices for healthcare services have increased significantly. Public and private local employers, as well as patients, pay these price increases in the form of higher premiums, higher co-pays, higher deductibles, less insurance coverage, and potentially in other ways. Our investigation to date suggests that local consumers have benefited from the close competition that currently exists between Mountain States and Wellmont, in the form of lower prices and higher-quality care. This competition has created incentives for both hospital systems to improve the quality of their existing services and to make investments that expand the medical technology options for area patients. Competition creates these benefits. When a patient, when patients have a choice of provider, hospitals must offer high-quality healthcare services to attract these patients. If a merger diminishes or eliminates competition in patient choice, the merged hospital system's incentive to maintain or improve quality generally diminishes as well. Similar to the Department of Health's review of the COPA application, and as part of our merger analysis, we also evaluate the likely benefits of mergers to determine whether the benefits will offset the likely harm from the merger. To this end, we are, to this end, we are currently examining the possible cost savings and quality of care benefits that this merger may provide the local community. We are also examining the commitments proposed by the Mountain States and Wellmont to mitigate the potential harm from the lost competition caused by the merger. Although our analysis is ongoing, experience shows that the kind of commitments proposed by the parties to date, which are designed to constrain their conduct after the merger, generally do not replicate the benefits of competition. It is important to understand that once a merger is consummated, whether under a COPA agreement or not, it is difficult, both legally and practically, to unwind the combined hospital system. If service lines have been eliminated and consolidated, if duplicative administrative and medical positions have been eliminated, and if IT, electronic health records, or other functions of the hospital have been integrated, it would be highly disruptive, if not virtually impossible, to pry that combined hospital system apart several years down the road. Thus, antitrust enforcement should not be relied upon as a future remedial measure should the Department of Health approve a COPA application and then determine that the disadvantages outweigh the benefits. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We take our role of protecting consumers in this region seriously. We plan to submit written comments to the Department of Health once the COPA application is deemed complete, so we can provide the most informed and complete analysis possible. As we have indicated on prior occasions, we remain available as a resource to the Department of Health and the community. Thank you again for your consideration, and apologies for going over my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Barker?
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm about an hour and a half down the road in a little community called Hawkins County. And we know firsthand what happens when a hospital is in fear, or you're in fear of losing a hospital. About 10 years ago, we had a grassroots hospital that had served our community since 1961. And then, all of a sudden, they were out of resources. We started losing the services, we started losing doctors, we started losing all the things that we had worked so hard to build. Unfortunately, Wellmont came in and took over our hospital for us. And one of the things that happened there, we had the same fears. We were afraid that what was going to happen was costs were going to go up, we were still going to have to go out of town to get good healthcare, and to our surprise, this merger between our hospital and Wellmont proved to be very beneficial for us. We have physicians now that come into our community and do surgery in the hospital. We have the opportunity to provide additional healthcare for the people in our community. We have had the opportunity to bring in physicians that we have lost. We have been able to bring in additional healthcare services that we never thought we'd have. We even opened the urgent care in our community through the merger with Wellmont. So, so for us, it's been a great benefit. And for a rural community, we're a 45-mile-long community. Sometimes it was hard for us to get all the way to Kingsport. But I think a merger between these two will offer us better healthcare, it will offer us a better opportunity to provide quality care, not only in our community, but also in the, in the region. One of the other things that has been a concern is when we recruit business, you know, with a small hospital, our hospital's a 50-bed hospital, and when we recruit business, one of the things that they're looking for is quality healthcare, and that we've got an opportunity to provide services if they have an emergency situation. And so, I think that with this merger, that will help ease some of those thoughts, and as we're bringing industry and business into our community, that it will give us an opportunity to be able to provide the reassurance that we have quality healthcare, and that if you locate in our community, that you will be able to, be able to receive that healthcare. And as we face healthcare issues in the future, we need to look at ways to address issues, such as mental health issues, drug abuse, addictions, diabetes, heart disease, and cancer, and have a healthcare system that will be proactive in addressing these issues. And we feel like that with this merger, that we will be able to do that. As a chamber, we need healthcare system that provides high-quality, affordable, accessible healthcare, and continually meets the needs of the community, and help provide job opportunities, and contribute to the economic viability, and work with our education institutions. So I hope that with these considerations, and healthcare plays such a vital role in our economic impact in our community and in the region, and is key to our success. And I hope that you'll keep that in mind, and I think a merger between Wellmont and Mountain Health would help not only this region and the area here, but also help us an hour and a half down the road. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Chad Couch?
Thank you, panel. Thank you, Dr. Dreisner. Nice to see you again. Chad? My name is Chad Couch. I'm the chief medical officer of Bristol Regional Medical Center. Prior to taking that role, I was in active practice of urology for 22 years, 16 of them in Bristol. I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed merger and the COPA application. At the end of last year, I wrote a letter to the editor that was published in several of the local papers in support of the merger. In that letter, I discussed the plans of the new system post-merger to invest in the mental health services and addiction treatment services that are so desperately needed in our communities. That ideal was reinforced to me recently, as I had the opportunity to spend a day shadowing one of our nurses in the emergency department of Bristol Regional. Approximately 75% of the patients that I saw with her that day were being held in the emergency department awaiting placement related to psychological, behavioral, or addiction issues, or a combination of those. That day was not an aberration. The need for these services is overwhelming, and my hope and expectation is that the new system will be able to redirect resources and fill those desperate needs. On another point, as someone with a long history of independent practice in our area, I've been impressed with the plans to provide significant protection for independent medical practices post-merger. This will be very important going forward, as we will need new models of joint physician and administrative leadership to shape the future of healthcare in our region. and administrative leadership to shape the future of healthcare in our region. And I believe the new system will be committed to this vision. Both integrated and independent physicians have been presented and played significant roles on the Integration Council and the Joint Board Task Force. The Clinical Council that is planned post-merger will involve physician leaders from across the region to provide guidance for the new system from a clinical perspective. The protections for independent physicians stated in the COPA application include open medical staffs at all facilities, no requirement to practice solely at the new system facilities, and the ability for independent physicians to participate in healthcare plans of their choice. I also feel that once the cloud of uncertainty about the merger has been lifted, we will be in a much better position to recruit some of the best and brightest physicians to our area to join both independent and integrated practices. The winds of change regarding healthcare are blowing across our region. It is my hope and belief that by harnessing the strength of the new system, our region will be in a better position to navigate these changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Pack, and he will be followed by Beth Reinhardt, David Woodmansey, and Andrew Fletcher.
Good evening, and thank you for coming to Northeast Tennessee. Dr. Dreisner, good to see you. How's it going? I'm Robert Pack. I'm from the ETSU College of Public Health, where I'm Professor of Community and Behavioral Health and Associate Dean for Academic Affairs, and also Director of the newly-formed Center for Prescription Drug Abuse Prevention and Treatment. Through the ETSU Research Foundation, our center is partnering with Mountain States Health Alliance to form a nonprofit opioid treatment program that will serve as a clinical arm of our center, the revenues from which will serve to grow the program and the center. The center was initiated through the Prescription Drug Abuse Working Group, which is a regional effort that is a monthly gathering of researchers and prevention, treatment, and service providers that meets monthly, and has since 2012. What we've discovered over the years is that there are no easy solutions to this problem of substance abuse in our region, and in particular, prescription drug abuse, and a comprehensive approach to combat it is needed. The proposed hospital systems merger has accelerated progress toward the goal of a comprehensive regional approach. The proposed merger prompted a community-wide conversation about key healthcare issues, such as drivers of neonatal abstinence syndrome, the relative paucity of inpatient substance abuse services, and lack of coordination of services for substance abuse, mental health, and co-occurring disorders. The proposed merger allowed for key stakeholders and decision-makers to meet regularly to share ideas and develop a common understanding about the healthcare assets and needs in the region. And through these meetings, it's become clear that alignment, rather than fragmentation of resources, is in the region's best interests. Importantly, our meetings facilitated conversation about duplication of effort and what none of the healthcare or public health providers were actually offering. For example, there's a true lack of regional resources in inpatient substance abuse and mental healthcare, child and adolescent psychiatry in particular. Coordinating and aligning the competing interests will maximize the system's limited resources and serve the region well, particularly in healthcare areas of such high costs as mental health and substance abuse. I believe the merged system will create additional opportunities, like our center, that will serve to further the public's public health interests in the region, such as diabetes and so on. And coordination and alignment of resources will facilitate those efforts. A health system that's focused on population health improvement, such as has been demonstrated by the present two systems in applying for approval of this COPA, will be beneficial to our region. For these reasons, I'm strongly supportive of your approval of this COPA. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Beth Reinhardt. I live in Bristol, Virginia, and I work in Bristol, Tennessee, as the President and CEO of the Bristol Chamber of Commerce. I want to first thank the Tennessee Department of Health, Commissioner Dreisner, and your team for all your efforts on behalf of this proposed merger between Wellmont Health System and Mountain States Health Alliance. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to extend my generous support for granting the Certificate of Public Advantage to these two organizations as they work to improve the health of our region. I will also note that our Chamber Board of Directors passed a unanimous vote for resolution in support of this proposed merger as well. Just wanted to start by sharing that I was formerly employed by Wellmont Health System for nearly 10 years prior to my employment with the chamber, and also worked closely with many of the folks at Mountain States Health Alliance. So I know firsthand the good work and the integrity of the folks at both Wellmont and Mountain States. I grew up in this region, and I chose to come back here to raise my family. Many of my family members live here in this region. For this, and among other reasons, I feel our region's healthcare should be decided by people who live, work, worship, and raise their families here. This would be possible through the proposed merger, which would create a locally governed health system. Personally working in the health system, I saw how duplication of services had the potential to get in the way of true effectiveness and efficiencies of healthcare delivery, just by the nature of competition alone. The focus of one merged entity would eliminate duplication of services and allow areas that need our greatest attention to be addressed, such as mental health and drug abuse. The COPA would change this from looking like a traditional merger. It would have diligent and active oversight and supervision by the state. Thus, both Mountain States and Wellmont Health System would be accountable for the outcomes and their successes. I participated in one of the community work groups, and I can attest to the commitment of both of these organizations and the due diligence that's gone into the many long months of this merger process. My efforts in the healthcare industry's government relations arena revealed many challenging economic fronts, such as continual reimbursement cuts, more than one could even imagine. This merger will also address some of these changes. The Wellmont-Mountain States merger will lead to investments and programs that prevent some of our region's worst health dynamics: use of controlled substances, managed scheduled drug over-prescribing, obesity, and many, many others. The newly-formed organization will develop new population health models that engage electronic medical records and community programs to, again, address many of our region's worst health outcomes. Finally, the newly-merged entity will be one of the strongest health systems in our country, and this means they will be known for the best clinical outcomes and patient experiences. This translates to better health outcomes for our families and greater life expectancy in a region that is currently experiencing some of those worst outcomes. The best clinicians and employees will want to practice and live here, and that in turn will be one of the greatest economic drivers our region could ask for. The success of this merger is critical to our future as a region. I have complete confidence in the leaders of both of these organizations to deliver what is being asked of them as a result of this merger. I appreciate your time.
Good evening. My name is David Woodmansey, and I am the Vice President, Assistant General Counsel, and Assistant Secretary for Eastman Chemical Company. Eastman has been a part of this community for 96 years. Eastman has approximately 6,600 full-time employees and 3,000 contractors working at our Kingsport facilities. We understand what it takes to leverage the strengths of this region to develop and promote world-class operations. In order to attract and retain the highest-quality talent, it is imperative that we have the highest-quality healthcare in this region. Further, it is essential that this high-quality healthcare remain available and affordable in this region. In order to achieve these goals, our two systems either need to combine with another system or merge. A merger, in our view, is preferable to assure that we leverage the positive attributes of the two systems and the strengths of this region. Eastman supports the merger of Wellmont and Mountain States under the detailed plans articulated in the COPA application. These plans, if monitored and executed, are aligned with Eastman's goals for high-quality and affordable healthcare in the region. Major systematic changes are underway in the healthcare sector, driven by government policy changes, as well as the economic conditions, demographics, and competition facing our global economy. In order to remain competitive, our healthcare system must proactively focus on managing costs, improving quality, and finding efficient and innovative ways to improve operations and services. The COPA application articulates a viable plan to address these challenges in a sustainable manner. As a self-insured company, Eastman makes healthcare provider choices based on the quality and value of services for our employees and their families. We believe a merger, combined with a robust and continued focus on improving the cost structure and quality of services, will result in an integrated delivery system that has the ability to provide world-class care to our community. Lastly, the COPA application provides a structure for commitments, supervision, and accountability for results. It is important for expenditures and collective investments to be tracked closely to ensure improvements in the healthcare of our region. If the merger is approved and the new system is managed appropriately, we believe this will lead to higher quality for patients, better access, and more manageable costs for employers like Eastman, who want to ensure our employees have the care they need. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. On behalf of Eastman, we sincerely appreciate your work on this effort and your consideration of the benefits of the proposed merger and what it could create for the residents living and working in the region. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Dr. Andrew Fletcher. I'm a pathologist at Mountain States Health Alliance and also a concerned community member. I think, as we all know, healthcare has changed. Reimbursements are going down, and quite frankly, hospital systems are closing for the first time. People are losing access to care. Part of this is due to a complicated set of rules and regulations, such as ACA, MSSP, VBP. Now we hear things called MACRA. It's an alphabetic soup, and it's a perfect storm. Hospitals are closing. And I think, I know, we've come to the crossroads in our community where this region can no longer support two fully-independent hospital systems. So we've got to make a decision. One is a merger. The other one likely involves the independent hospital systems both merging with outside entities. So let's look at that option. What would that mean for our area? Quite frankly, I don't know. I've heard a lot of conversations tonight saying that that may be detrimental. I have to ask myself, how would an outside entity address improving community health, enhancing healthcare services, expanding access, improving healthcare value, expanding research and graduate medical education? Again, I don't know. How would a merger improve or address these issues? That, I can say definitively, I do know thanks to the COPA, and it's written where we can all see it. Some of the numbers: how would a merger improve community health? At least $75 million investment. Enhancing community healthcare services? Investing $140 million. It goes on and on. Improving healthcare value? $150 million investment. Health research, graduate medical education, an investment of $85 million. So we have that in writing, and we have to make a decision at this fork in the road. I think on some decisions, it's okay to roll the dice and gamble, but not on healthcare in East Tennessee. So we've got a decision that could potentially be a gamble. We don't know what the results are. The other decision is written in paper. Finally, I'd just like to address, I do think consumer protection is an utmost issue. We need to do due diligence and protect that. But as a physician, my definition of consumer protection is ensuring that people don't die of chronic illnesses or lack of access in the rural areas of East Tennessee. So thank you. I do urge, I support the COPA, and I hope you can as well.
Good to see you. Welcome. Almost home. I'm Gary Mayberry. I'm President and CEO of the Johnson City-Jonesboro-Washington County Chamber of Commerce. I've been to several of these presentations, so I want to take a slightly different tack and say maybe a handful of things and be under my three minutes, which that would be a good thing. Our Chamber Board spent as much time as any community group could scrutinizing what we're talking about today. And we unanimously, after our own due diligence, said that this merger would be extremely beneficial. Our members are local in the county, throughout our Northeast Tennessee region, and our members are also worldwide with their headquarters. It's easy for a Chamber Executive to stand up and say this, because many of our members are here tonight, and you've heard from them. So I want to kind of be a cheerleader for them, and I also want to make three observations: becoming better together. We saw and have seen, since this process began, two groups, two professional groups, two governance groups, sit together, work together, and look what we've gotten, and look where we're going, and look what we're going to achieve. You, sir, appointed a group of ladies and gentlemen throughout this region, from Johnson County all the way down this congressional district. And having watched Gary and that group work together, my goodness, you deserve all kinds of kudos just for the appointment of that group. What we hope is going to be an outcome, though, is that we will become a region known for being healthy. And that will enable these corporate relocators and folks looking at our area to start a business or keep their business. They'll say, well, you know, those folks are healthy. They can come to work. We can count on them being here every day. I do want to say that we do feel that the repurposing, the research, the fact that our university will become a major healthcare research institution, as you've heard, Dr. Means, the wonderful new dean of our Quillan College of Medicine. We also think it can resolve those health problems, because after all, it is about our citizens. And as one gentleman just noted, we have to take care of our citizens. So in closing, let me just say thank you. Thank you for your wisdom to appoint the folks you did to look at this. Thanks to the wisdom of our two medical systems for their effort to make this happen. And I'm convinced that down the road, we'll look back and say this was a milestone achievement, and the best is still to come. And thank you, and appreciate what you're doing.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address this important hearing. My name is Bob Fiegans, and I serve as the Executive Director of Communications and Development for the Kingsport Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight to relay the Kingsport Chamber's strong and overwhelming support for the proposed merger between Wellmont Health System and Mountain States Health Alliance. We believe a fully-integrated, and more importantly, a locally-governed health system that unites the immense medical talents and expertise of these outstanding healthcare systems will provide even greater medical care that is more affordable, of even higher quality, and more patient-focused. We are enormously beneficial to the business community and residents of this region. It is very reassuring to know that the new system will be locally managed by committed and caring leaders who live and work here in our region, our friends and neighbors who have a sincere and committed interest in the welfare and well-being of their home community. From a community and business perspective, having a locally-managed, unified health system where all decisions are made here is a very critical point. The leaders of this new entity live here. They work here. Their families are here, and indeed, their futures are here. I can assure you that someone who deals directly with various businesses on all levels, from small businesses to large companies, on a daily basis, that those businesses whose careers, homes, and livelihoods are here, whose leaders are here, have a more substantial and substantive impact on this community, as compared to those whose decisions must be made on an anonymous corporate level from headquarters in another part of the country. That impact is huge. The future of healthcare in our area is essential not only for the lives of residents, but for the economic growth of our region. We want to attract top doctors and nurses and other healthcare professionals. We want businesses to be attracted to our communities and to invest in our economy. And the strength of our healthcare services will be part of their evaluation of this area. While we are working to recruit businesses and families to move here, the two questions that are asked all the time are about our schools and our healthcare system. Fortunately, we have two superb entities in both. Having this combined healthcare system means jobs, and enhances our region's economic prosperity by making us a location of choice for the nation's top medical professionals. We applaud the medical, administrative, and volunteer leaderships of both systems for finding a solution that will unify the systems to work together to combat the challenges confronting the healthcare industry. This bold endeavor will help address many of these obstacles and position the entity to be even stronger in the future. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Isaac Webb. Last year, I was the Chairman of the Kingsport Chamber of Commerce Board, but I speak to you today from the perspective of my day job. I'm the local manager for Appalachian Power Company, an investor-owned utility that serves 50,000 customers in Northeast Tennessee, and my organization serves another 100,000 in Southwest Virginia, most of the footprint that this merger represents. And we're also the only investor-owned utility of any size that's regulated by the state of Tennessee. And so let me tell you that being regulated by the state of Tennessee, our customers are well-represented. And while sometimes it constricts my spending and my practices, I think they're well-represented by those regulators. One of the things I know- One of the things I know from almost a 40-year career working for a regulated monopoly is that I've got to be real diligent about making investments in our system because the only folks that can pay for those investments are our customers. And so we do just that. Now, 30 years ago, or a little bit more than that, I came to the tri-cities for the first time and was aware of the hospital systems. And 30 years ago, you couldn't get from Kingsport to Johnson City as fast as you can now, and you really couldn't get from Bristol to Johnson City as fast as you can now. And so you had three separate cities, and you had about five hospital systems that served those three systems. And then, when you get outside of that footprint, there probably were a dozen or more different hospital systems. And there wasn't competition because you just went to the hospital that was close to you. Now, over the last few years, as the transportation has improved, and even the communication system, you know, it makes a big difference when you don't have to make a long-distance phone call to Johnson City and those kinds of things. And so what we've seen is a consolidation of those systems. And one of the things that's concerning, just from the perspective of being a monopolist, if you will, is that I see the two hospital systems competing with each other and making major investments to make themselves more competitive. While I understand why they do that, the fact is that we only need one of this and one of that in this region. And so my hope is that if you approve this proposal, that we'll start to see some efficiency and some cost savings, and again, have service for our local area with a local organization that can address the unique needs of the area. I appreciate your time.
Hello, my name's Lisa Carter. I'm the CEO of Nassau Hunger Children's Hospital with Mountain State's Health Alliance. And I've heard a word mentioned a lot throughout this evening, and that's competition. And I want to talk for just a minute about that, and I want to tell you what I'm competing for. In this region, I'm competing for the health and the well-being of the children. And now I want to tell you a few things that I'm competing against. I'm competing against literacy rates that are not where they need to be. I'm competing against socioeconomic levels that are low and families that live in continued poverty. I'm competing against unemployment rates. I'm competing against drug addiction rates that are through the roof. I'm competing against healthcare issues that face our region every single day that absolutely affect the lives of our children. And when I look through an agreement that allocates $140 million to the health of children and rural health in this community, it gives me hope in competing against these forces that affect these children every single day. We have very, very underserved populations. When I look at a community like Johnson County that doesn't even have a pediatrician present, and we want to talk about competition, we're way past that as this region. We really need to talk about access to care for these kids, and we really need to allocate funds to meet that need. And to me, that's what this agreement does. It really brings money to services that are very much lacking within this community and within this region. I can tell you countless stories about babies who experience withdrawal from drugs they've been exposed to in utero. That is a very, very real challenge that we're competing against every single day. I can talk about families who don't have the resources they need, basic food that they need. We're trying to combat hunger in this area. Those are real challenges, and that's the competition that we face every single day. And this agreement can help us fight that. Also need to talk about research. There's $85 million, I think, that have been allocated for research in this agreement. Right now, we have anecdotal information. My husband's a schoolteacher in a local high school, and he can tell me anecdotally the kind of effects that long-term neglect of health are having on teenagers in our society. But with research and true longitudinal studies, we can have empirical data that shows us what these children are faced with every single day and what they're up against. I'm very excited about this agreement, and I thank you for being here tonight. And when we talk about competition, I just wanted to share a few of the things that we really are competing against in this region. The challenges are real for the children, and the money that's been allocated will certainly help us fight these causes. Thank you.
Dr. Jerry Blackwell, thank you so much. Dr. Dreisner and folks for having us here. Again, I'm here, Dr. Jerry Blackwell, as the President of Wellmont Cardiology Services. We are a 40-member cardiovascular services organization with 250 full-time employees, 500 service line employees, and my life's work is delivering care in this region. My other hat, of course, is the same hat that's worn by the folks that are in this auditorium, and that is as a citizen of the region. And I'm here in full support of the merger, proposed merger between the two entities, as well as the COPA application. And I'm going to frame this very briefly in two ways. One is the region that we serve here. It's a very unique region. Every day, my group, myself, and the physicians in this region serve an area of 9,000 square miles. That 9,000 square miles is predominantly rural and filled with folks that are ravaged by hypertension, diabetes, tobacco abuse, things that require a unique approach to care that we are committed to providing. The number-one killer of both men and women in this country is cardiovascular disease. We're committed to trying to come up with the ways to do this most effectively. We believe that we can help solve this problem locally. The second part of this framework is a national healthcare landscape. We're not here because folks in this region did anything wrong. We're doing it because there is a hue and cry from the federal government saying, "Give us a better model." And I firmly believe that our ability as a combined organization, instead of turning our attention towards competing with each other, but rather to turning it towards a patient-value proposition with the patient at the center to provide higher quality at lower cost, is the answer to that equation. I believe we have unique resources inside the Wellmont Health System, inside the Mountain State's Health Alliance, and with our academic partners to actually radically change how care is delivered in a positive way. So in conclusion, I'll just end by saying I had two hats on here. One is that of a committed practitioner in this region. The second is that of a concerned citizen. The answer is that I feel compelled to be sure that we leave this place better than we found it. My analysis is that a combined organization, looking at things differently, providing different systems of care, not the same thing better, but different systems of care, is the preferred way to do it. I thank you for your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Nearing, and I am the Dean of the College of Nursing at East Tennessee State University. Dr. Means did a wonderful job of representing us, but I feel compelled to talk about nursing. We have the largest nursing program in the state and offer baccalaureate through doctoral programs. Last year, we enrolled about 1,200 students. Therefore, we are very interested in the outcome of this merger effort due to our large need for clinical placements. First, I believe that everyone deserves optimal health, and nurses are one discipline that can play a role in achieving that goal. There are 7,162 licensed registered nurses in northeast Tennessee, which is 1.4 nurses for every 100 residents. There are five nursing programs in this area that provide associate degrees through doctoral degrees. Our nursing programs deliver programs that provide nurses at the registered nurse through advanced practice registered nurse levels. Our graduates are able to take positions in a variety of healthcare agencies. We are well-positioned to meet the demand for nursing care in this region for many years to come, and will continue to recruit excellent qualified students. And it's important that our graduates have places in this region in which they want to continue to work. So you heard earlier that there is a nursing shortage. Certainly, some of the hospitals do need a number of nurses. But we have to, as many of the people said tonight, raise that level of care, which I believe this merger could do, so that our graduates want to stay in this area. Second, the region would benefit from more research conducted by nurses about nursing care, cost of care, delivery of care, models of care, and outcomes of care, for example. In addition, collaborative research is needed by interprofessional research teams, which include nurses. Third, joint appointments comprised of research-focused doctoral nursing faculty with our healthcare systems are needed if this merger occurs to assist with nursing research. Such arrangements are a win-win for both the hospital and nursing program as new ideas are tested, better care delivered, and knowledge is shared with nursing students. Fourth, working together for a seamless continuum of care from the patient to the provider to the healthcare system and back is essential. At the College of Nursing, we operate 14 nurse-led clinics that care for the uninsured, underinsured, homeless, migrant, and school populations. Working more closely with this proposed healthcare system will enhance the care delivered to the health of the population. Patient-centered, care-based healthcare is the preferred delivery model. Nurses are an essential member of the team and will continue to play an important role in the care of our population. At East Tennessee State University, we teach our nursing students to critically think, to lead, and to provide the best compassionate care. I believe that the current and future nurses in our region will continue to step up and accommodate to changes in healthcare to reach the goal of optimal healthcare for all. Any merger should put into place the ability to reach these goals, and I believe these two healthcare systems believe that too. Thank you.
Dr. Dreisner and panel, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for being here in northeast Tennessee. My name is Dan Polgiers. I am a 20-plus-year resident of northeast Tennessee, and I have had the privilege of working in healthcare as a provider, as a practice administrator, and now as an independent medical practice consultant. I commend the advisory group on the index that was developed and the Department for the COPA application and the rules. However, I am unable to state my support or opposition to the merger until a completed application is submitted and accepted by the Department of Health. I believe this should include the disadvantages to the merger, which it currently does not, and a strong separation agreement. There are several other issues that, if eliminated from the index, would prevent my support. In the other category, number five of the index, to maintain a strong local control and governance, the COPA is not transferable to any entity. Like many people have spoken here today, I believe the COPA is truly only a public advantage if there is local control of the merged entity, and the COPA should only exist with continued local governance. If the merged system is ever sold to an entity outside the geographic region, the COPA should be terminated and the separation agreement triggered. In the DOH promulgated rules, which I've attached a copy, and I would please ask that this information be also included in the information tonight. Subsection 2, number 17, states that the application must include a plan of separation. Why is this important? As previously stated this evening, the FTC in a letter, which is also attached on December 22nd, 2015, states that once two companies have combined through a merger, it often becomes difficult to unwind the integration of the merged party's assets. At the September 23rd, 2015 Rules Hearing, Wellmont and Mountain State's Health Alliance opposed having a separation agreement in the COPA application. In their written statements, they, start quotation, respectfully suggested that the separation agreement be excluded from the application process. The rules were not modified. Per a letter dated March 28th, 2016, from Dr. Dreisner, the Department has requested additional information from the applicants and has deemed the separation agreement incomplete. I applaud the Department for the position on this provision, and any attempt by the applications to change this rule would prevent me and most of my colleagues from supporting the COPA. I have two other issues that I wanted to bring up, but to relinquish the rest of my time, I'll just turn those in as written statements. Thank you again for your time.
You have a few remaining moments.
And I appreciate you being here this evening.
Hi, I'm Donnell Glasscock. I'm the Executive Director of the United Way of Greater Kingsport, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. The United Way of Greater Kingsport supports Better Together. The benefits of the commitments outlined by the two health systems closely align with what the United Way has identified as key gaps in our community. United Ways across our region look closely at the key building blocks of education, income, and health. These are very important to our community citizens. We are committed at United Way to solving our community's root cause issues. Our United Way has been working diligently on many of these issues that are also outlined in the commitments, including the percentage of children reading at their third-grade level, access to healthcare, mental health issues, drug abuse issues, including the impact of the unfortunately high numbers of children who are born addicted to drugs. The benefit charitable health organizations provide in our community is greatly valued by United Way, but we also recognize that much more community support is needed for these organizations. We would anticipate this would happen for the Better Together merger. The cycle of life continues. Those who have good education and access to healthcare are more likely to have jobs that provide a sustainable wage for their families. We believe that benefits listed in the commitments by Wellmont and Mountain States would ensure that a better life is available to all in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Wally Hankwitz, President of Highlands Health Management in Kingsport, and it's good seeing many of you again. This application is for the merger of two nonprofit, tax-exempt, community health systems. As a community health system, they need to be accountable to the community. They need to be transparent. And late last month, the Kingsport, the local paper, published an article that I crafted on the importance of administrative and governance transparency at our health systems and at the new company. It's the title of the article, "Sunshine Is the Best Disinfectant," and I'll leave it here for the panel to review. Transparency and lack thereof, in my mind, is a major issue here. And I ask, are you all aware that last fall, on September 21st, the U.S. Department of Justice announced its settlement in a suit in excess of $115 million against two hospital systems who were found guilty of fraud and abuse for filing false insurance claims? And one of those two systems is a COPA applicant? Where was this disclosed in the COPA application? Are you aware that last month, on May 24, Vanderbilt University Medical Center announced it created the Vanderbilt Health Affiliated Network to contract throughout the state with payers? And their network includes MISHA. I don't recall seeing or reading that in the application either. Where's the transparency? Where's the honesty? Where's the integrity? And we're expected to trust what they say? What else is missing? What else don't we know? Is there a need for transparency? You bet, and I've got some recommendations. Number one, stream all board meetings live and record them so the community can view what their community representatives act on. Secondly, being a community system, at least two-thirds of the board should be voted on and appointed, elected by the community, not by the monopoly's management or incumbent board members. Third, the Tennessee U, the Tennessee Department of Health, should appoint at least one representative to attend every single board meeting to monitor the activity to make sure that the promises, the so-called commitments that they're making in the application are adhered to. And last, at least two representatives, and this is not the least important point, but the most important point, and that is a representation of the independent physicians. At least two of the board members should be appointed by the independent physicians in this community. The independent physicians are the backbone of this community. They're loyal. Hospital management comes and goes. The physicians are here. They are the ones that need to be represented. Thank you.
Dr. Dreisner, staff, thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for an opportunity to speak with you. My name's Tony Seaton. I am an ophthalmologist in Kingsport, Tennessee. I am also here to represent Highlands Physicians Incorporated, which is an independent physician association that represents 1,500 providers in east Tennessee and southwest Virginia. Obviously, we are very dedicated to the health and the well-being of our community. We take that very seriously, and we feel that we need a very strong hospital system to be able to provide that care to our population. We feel that the COPA should be approved, but only if there are protections and state monitoring that's included in that approval. Those protections and monitings that we would like to see included would include, one, the merged entity should not be allowed to prevent certificate of needs that may be able to increase competition, provide for better cost savings, and to continue innovation in the area. Number two, there should be a cap on the number of physicians employed by the merged entity relative to independent physicians. We feel that no more than 30% of the employed physicians, or no more than 30% of the physicians in the area should be employed by the merged entity. We feel that equal representation, both of employed and independent physicians on the merged entities merged entity's corporate board of directors and clinical council should be in place, and that measures should be in place to prevent discrimination against non-employed physicians. All qualified physicians who are willing to accept fair market value or fair market compensation should have the right to be included in payer networks, including the entity's health plan. We would encourage the use of community-based health information exchange, such as the one that's currently up and running in our area. And we also would encourage annual independent surveys of all impacted groups for adverse impacts. One of the concerns we have would be the possibility that the merged entity and employed physicians might be able to exclude independent physicians from certain contracts or certain payers. That has been discussed here this evening, and there are discussions in the COPA as to how to prevent that from happening. We were concerned that if something like that did happen, there could be migration of physicians that may be longstanding in our community with loss of longstanding patient-physician relationships. So again, we would love to see protections and assessments built into the COPA that could help to prevent such a thing. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Have you wondered about the profile of the people who are speaking to you? Have you noticed how few average consumers are here? Have you asked yourself about that? I want to propose that perhaps they've come to the same conclusions I have. I've become very disillusioned with our government on all levels, local, regional, state, and federal. I no longer see our government as serving its citizens. So perhaps, in a sense, I may see myself as representing all of the people who are voiceless, who may have also lost faith in our government. I came tonight very convinced of my position, and I may have moved along a continuum. And perhaps that's a good thing to do, is to be willing to change. Both of my parents were harmed by one of the three large hospitals in our area. I'm afraid to tell you which one, because I may have to be served there at some point. I've been reading patient empowerment books, and I believe at this point that I should not be in a hospital without a patient advocate at my side to protect me 24/7. My father had a leg amputated not once, but twice. That was not the hospital's fault now. That was not. I'm not blaming them. But I am blaming the one or more people, either during surgery or after surgery, who had him acquire, made him acquire, a hospital-acquired infection. And the treatment that they gave him was so horrendous, so harsh, that it ruined his sense of taste and of hearing. So here's this poor man who spent the last seven years of his life in a hospital bed. He had a cancerous larynx removed, he had a leg amputated not once, but twice. One minute. Wow. Okay, forget the story. Let me get to my points. Dr. Dreisner, I came to see you. I've realized that I'm going to need to trust you, I who do not trust government, to do the right thing. If our hospitals are dying, then they need to merge. My guess, as a consumer, is that, based on the research that I've done, I have two master's degrees, I do research well, is that it serves patients better if they merge with outer ones. Then as a patient, I at least have two options. I can research. What was that? Is that 30 seconds?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. Wow. Wow. Apparently, I didn't.
You're also able to submit written comments.
I'm sorry?
You're also able to submit written comments.
I'm going to have to trust you, I who do not trust government. I'm going to have to trust you to actually do the best thing for consumers. If we have to merge, merge. But with whomever. I don't think logically, common sense, I think the gentleman from the FTC was exactly right. Research shows that the costs are going to go up, and I lose options. I can't make choices. So probably mergers elsewhere. But what I want you to do, please, is use your power to improve the quality of patient care. Medical errors are now the third-leading cause of death in the United States. That's scandalous, and nobody's going, "Oh!" And they should. Improve patient care. I came, I drove all the way here, sat through all this, just to say that to you. I appreciate your listening. I who don't have confidence in our own government, I'm impressed that you all bothered to come. Thank you. I really am. I'm serious. I appreciate that you all came and are listening. At least you appear to be listening. Thank you. So please use your power to actually help consumers, whatever that is. I'm going to have to trust you to make the best decision. Thank you.